All right. It is six thirty. So we'll get started. With us tonight is Kim Dunsmar, Ben Peters, Michael Gary, and myself. And we have, we don't have that screen up, but I saw that.
Robert Pringler.
Pringler, and then, is that it for right at this moment? Okay. Craig Schulte may be late, so we'll just wait for him. I mean, we're not going to wait for him, but
Okay.
we know that he will be here a little bit later on. So, there we go. With that, I'm going to open up Open Forum. Is there anyone here this evening for Open Forum? In any of the empty chairs? I think I know the seated chairs and why they are here. All right. I do have a couple comments that are coming in this evening on one of our agenda items, and they came in by email and asked to be read. So they're technically part of the Open Forum, so I'm going to read those now. The first is from Sarah Halberg. "I am unable to attend the meeting tonight regarding bathrooms, but wanted to share my thoughts. I think investing in ADA bathrooms is the best option for the city and our visitors. We tout our community as world-class, and our facilities should reflect so. We will never have enough public restrooms to accommodate all the folks that visit. But we can ensure what we do offer is within ADA compliance, well-lit, has running water, and is more welcoming than porta-potties. I will say, however, that G and G does a stellar job of keeping them clean. If you would like to submit my email as a public comment, that's good with me. Please reach out if you have any questions. Thank you." And that was Sarah Halberg. Next is from Gina Joyce, owner of Rome and Whimsy &amp; Company. "I write to express my opinion related to tonight's agenda item, public restrooms, and kindly request that you read my email as part of tonight's Open Forum. As a small business owner in town with no access to public facilities in my business, nor my neighboring business owners, I see tremendous value in the city owning ADA-compliant restroom trailers with heat for year-round use now and into the future. While the upfront capital expenditure may seem high, the useful life of such amenities in our tourist-centric town will prove well worth the investment with increased availability of these basic yet extremely necessary facilities. Thank you for your time, and I greatly appreciate your consideration." So. And with that, the other comments were already sent out to the council. And I don't think there was a request for those to be read. One of them was not, was, was not from a, not particular to our situation.
Yeah.
So. All right. Moving on to the consent agenda. A moment here. We, anyone have any questions or comments about the bills at all?
I did not.
Okay. Anything on the meeting minutes?
Nope.
Okay. I have a few changes to the meeting minutes, and I know Kim is sort of busy with dual work this evening, but I would like to, and I have them written, we can, I'll get you the, the written later. The first has to do with our summary of the administrator's review portion. The sentence that the administrator is meeting exceeding ninety percent of the goals is not accurate, and I'd ask that that be removed, and it wasn't part of what we were stating in that portion of the meeting. The second pieces are down into, under council and staff reports, and just a few changes to my report. Under the YMCA number four, "An email was sent to the YMCA leadership inquiring if EV charging stations would be possible as other YMCA's in the country have them." It's not that they may apply, we, we don't know, it's just a request made based on input I was given from residents. "We connected the Dark Skies Group with Jason Hale for consideration in new business projects." And. Down to number seven with Eric Humphrey. His request is with our new building situation, would we consider changing the lighting? Not currently. In fact, we won't have any lighting or flag, I'm assuming, until then anywhere. This will be at the courthouse, and that'll be taken care of through that.
Mm-hmm.
So. Under ten with the R C P I, we were, get to that note. What we did at that point was the scope of work was confirmed with the R C P I project, and it will include the main harbor shore pilings and the Boulder Park east to Broadway. And just combining numbers eight and nine, this was a meeting with Empowering Small Cities for East Bay erosion. And then Teresa Bida of the Kokoni E D A also wrote a grant that combines Taconite Harbor and Business Park. So that eight and nine are really related, they're all under that same grant program. Just wanted that clarified. So those would be the changes to the meeting minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those changes.
All right.
Second.
All right. All in favor of consent agenda? Aye. Great. Thank goodness.
We got it.
Thank goodness, at this point, everybody showed up tonight, so we can have the real meeting. Next up on our meeting is appointment and oath for our new-appointed city councilman person, William Lovas. Would you like to come up? And I guess right now, just so you get heard, might be good if you just sat in front of the mic for right now. So, first of all, we have a resolution which is twenty, twenty twenty-four dash two zero, resolution appointing William Lovas to fill the vacancy on city council. Would anyone like to make a motion on this resolution?
I would make that motion.
Second.
Any further conversation, discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And with that, it's time to take the oath. So, you have to be like super official. Put your hands down back in the back row. I, William Lovas.
I, William Lovas.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
To support.
To support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city council.
Of city council.
For the city of Grand Marais, Minnesota.
For the city of Grand Marais, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment.
To the best of my judgment.
And ability.
And ability.
And this I do under the penalties of perjury.
And this I do under the penalties of perjury.
Thank you. You're now a city councilperson here for Grand Marais. And.
Run over.
This is your seat, and I will let you sign this too, once you get situated. Thank you. It's good to have you aboard. We're back with full oath. Oh. Can you send Craig an invite? Yeah. Do you have his contact info? Or do you want me to? Okay.
No.
All right. We can take a second while Bill's signing, and you can do that, and then.
So wait, is it Bill, or is it Billy?
Oh, yeah, let us know. Yeah, let us know, so we don't speak here. And I'll just acknowledge this, so he knows we're working on it.
My attention's William.
All right.
No, no, I'm out of order.
All right, well. Okay, I'll just say, okay. Crack a minute to get his stuff in order. Next up is with the Planning Commission's report. And is that you, Michael?
Yeah, so that, Spains, this, he came back around again. We had a few questions. He had been to Planning and Zoning a month before. But we weren't really clear on exactly his parking situation, and he didn't really show us that. And that was something, obviously, that we all talk about, and so we kind of really wanted to see, like, okay, what's your plan? And how many, how many rooms do you have? Or not rooms, how many units do you have? And he came back again this time and had some more to say and to show us, you know, like, oh, here it is, it's one, one unit. And he had, well, more than one parking space in the back there, so. Seemed like, okay, well, that, that kind of covers it. And, you know, he's transitioning it really from being, you know, short stay into being long-term. So that seemed like, oh, okay, yeah, that's great. And it's for his own employees, so that also is great.
Okay. Anything else, or, or good?
Just one thing that came out of the meeting that will probably be something we'll talk about more in Planning and Zoning is, like, right now, we do only have rules about parking spaces per unit, and we don't really get into how many rooms there are in a unit. And that might be something that we'll have a conversation about in the future, but that was one thing that came up during the meeting.
Yeah, we kind of thought that through with, a little bit with Hannah's new bakery, because I think that unit has several bedrooms, which means sometimes you get multiple families arriving, not one car. So, yeah.
Right.
The current rule is what, one, one spot per unit?
Yeah.
Period?
Regardless, okay. Yeah. So, anyway, that was it, but insofar as this goes, it seemed like, yeah, he is in all rights to do it, and I think it would be a good thing. We don't often see things coming out of the short stays, so it could be a good deal.
All right.
All right, a motion to support Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one, the ban's conditional use.
And I would second that.
All right. Any further questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you want a minute, Kim, while you're, are you okay, or?
I haven't got Craig yet. I think I sent you the wrong email, but we'll see.
So you resigned it out now? Okay. I can just. So Chris, while we're waiting for Craig, you might as well come up. This is your next item, which is the liquor store transition.
All righty.
Hey, buddy.
Hey.
We know this is another big step of this year with all of this going away in a brand-new building, but you're operating one of our principal operations here for this city, and a huge moneymaker, and it's a business. And we just wanted to hear how everything's going. I know you've got a lot on your plate, getting things moved, and timelines are tight, so, yeah. We'd love to hear how it's all going. Any issues, anything, what's the plan? I hear more probably than the rest of the council does, so. Or if you guys, is it easier for us to ask some questions, or you just want to?
Yeah, I ask away, and then maybe I can kind of fill in things after. Or we could go the other way.
Yeah.
You know? Have a pretty good plan for everything to happen, and it's all, it's all been on pace so far. So, like, and you can't kind of, you can't put the cart before the horse in any of these things. I had to talk to Nita and secure a lease to put the cargo container on her property. That was one of the first things that we had to do before we could talk about building a ramp or anything on her property, is we had to make sure everything was okay with her. Okay, we gotta, we gotta be a good neighbor, and we gotta make her happy, because we need that space, so.
Yeah, and where's that gonna be? I'm not exactly clear with that.
So you know where her, her little studios are? Nita's Studios between the Beaver House and Eight Broadway?
Oh, okay, okay.
So there's a spot in the very back, behind her houses and parallel with the Beaver House, that works perfect for a cargo container.
Okay.
It fits in there, and it doesn't really, it doesn't disrupt what, what she's doing at all.
Okay.
She, her lease will be paid in one of two ways. She's talked about maybe wanting power run to her property, which was about $4,000. And the terms of the lease, if we get the building done in time with her, would be about $4,000 in cash also, so she's deciding on which one of those options she wants still. But she's on board with that. It just so happens that in the back of the Beaver House, there's a room that's foamed that they used for a cooler at one time, so that's going to be a walk-in beer cave for the short time while we're there. That'll allow us to get a lot more stuff in the back, so we'll take a condenser and a compressor from the old wooden cooler in the liquor store, bring it over there and hook it up, and we got a beer cave. Lenny and the guys have been getting the space ready. I think we gotta find a spot for a mop station still, because there aren't many drains in the floor or anything like that, but that's about the only little building piece. We're working on a bathroom. There was no hot water in the bathroom, so that's, that's in the pipeline, too. I think it's almost, a lot of, it's pretty close, isn't it? Like, it's, I mean, it's all.
Yeah, we replonked, and I got hot water up there now.
Great.
We got a sink that Rodney cut out of a table that was in the mayor's office. We put a mono to sink in that, so.
We're doing some repurposing with things. Yeah.
Well, all right.
Yeah. Yeah, we got a, we got a new counter for the cash registers built. I'm gonna bring a bunch of shelving over there tomorrow and just kind of see how things look and how they configure the best way.
Yeah.
We'll see how level the floor is when we put some shelves on it, too. If they want to stand up straight, or if they want to lean either way.
And what is the square footage difference between the two? Will, will be, you know, like your retail space.
As far as like the front area, which is all you have over there, I think it's pretty similar in size. It's a little narrower, but it's, it's a little wider.
Okay.
So it's, and like if we, being able to use that back room for a big cooler helps immensely.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll keep some, we'll keep some reserve supplies, and as we go through things that we've taken out here in the cargo container, bring them in. Yeah, I think we got a pretty good plan for everything. Start moving tomorrow, move all next week. Talk to electricians about, well, it's all wired. Jeremy will riddle up, borrow, move the computer systems over. We're gonna have to get some dingers on the, on the doors, you know, so we know when people are coming or going. We'll get some cameras up just for a little security, for some security purposes. So the, one of the beer companies is gonna make a big window cling for the front of the building, where the two big windows are that run north and south, and that'll, the whole thing will say Grand Marais Municipal Liquor Store with hours and everything, so that kind of.
Great.
Be pretty easy to see that. I mean, I know there's a lot of noise on the Beaver House, but even so, I feel like that should stick out better that a lot of things would.
Sure. Yeah.
What else have we been working on? Getting inventory down, which has been a lot harder this year than most years, because there's nobody to sell anything to for a good part of the year. Yeah, there's a lot of little things that you don't think about. You know, just all these little moving things that you, it's a lot of stuff, there's a lot of pieces.
When is the day? Like, what is, if you were to forecast it out, like, when are you gonna be?
Oh, it'll be down to the last. It'll be that last weekend, maybe even Sunday.
First of April, like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we have to turn over the building April one.
Yeah.
This.
So that Sunday would be the last day of March. It'll be that weekend.
Yeah.
That we, that we complete. You know, hopefully, we're operating over there, but still hauling a little bit of stuff out of here by then. That's, that's what I'm aiming for.
Same point of sale equipment, everything else, I mean.
It all, that all will transfer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good deal.
And you can split, you might have some dual time, right? Or are you trying to keep it?
We won't have any dual time as far as operating two facilities.
Okay.
We'll either be in one spot or the other. That's just too much, and you're spread too thin if.
Staff-wise?
Yeah. And, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of things we're not gonna have enough of to have it at two locations, and it seems kind of ridiculous to be like, well, that one's up the other liquor store still, you know?
Are you gonna try to operate every, every business day you can in between now and then? Or are you gonna close that?
No, we don't want to close. No, I'd, I think we can do it without closing.
Yeah, I would think.
You know, we may have to.
Maybe that Sunday, maybe the first.
Maybe shut down early at some point, or potentially that Sunday, just for the, some of that's gonna depend on, like, when Jeremy can get POS stuff moved, or if he can do that, would we?
Yeah.
You know, that, that would be the only glitch with, with having to close a day would be. But I think we could probably move a couple computers, you know, keep, I, I think it'll work out. I'm really not that worried about any of that stuff.
How much of the movement is gonna be staff, or are the vendors gonna be moving their stuff, or their?
Um, so the beer guys will help move some stuff. The thing about, like, using liquor companies or beer companies is they only touch their own items. Like, I'm, you know, I'm not moving that Coors Light, I don't work for them. I'm a Bud guy, you know, it's, and stuff like that. So we'll get some help from them moving the beer over. I do have four big coolers that Burnix is just gonna let us use during the move also, so we'll put some of the more, be the more popular things out there.
Sure.
So that people don't necessarily have to go in the beer cooler if they don't want to.
But it'd be on that north wall, toward the end?
It'll, I mean, all the beer will be in a section. It'll kind of be like the door to the cooler is in this side, all the beer is kind of in that corner. Yeah, it's, I mean, once we get some shelving up tomorrow and kind of start visualizing which way it'll go, it'll be easier to see, but I'm sure I'll move those shelves about thirty times first, just to, you know, and it's like staging a business.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So what shelving are you using? Are you using, you're taking it out?
We're gonna use a bunch of the backroom stuff, because we're gonna run an aisle down the middle, and we can double-side it. I think those are a lot easier to move than those big shelves that we have, and those big gondolas and stuff. And a lot of these are, you know, four to eight-foot sections versus a twelve-foot gondola section, which, you know, nobody wants to haul out of there.
Yeah.
I think if we double-side things, and if we've got some room to store some boxes underneath, we've got our space situation pretty taken care of.
Great.
All right. Yeah, you surprised me, you said the floor is actually pretty sturdy.
Yeah.
That's, would have not been my first thought. So that's good to know.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it looks really good over there. If you haven't taken a look, stop by sometime, and I'll bring you over there. I mean, it's, it's hard to believe it was the Beaver House.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, just the amount of stuff in there, and to see it empty, it just, it looks totally different. It's pretty cool.
Yeah.
They did quite a cleanup, right? And they did some painting and?
Yeah, walls, floor, they did an excellent, the basement is incredible from, from what it originally was.
So, yeah, they worked really hard to help on their end to get it started.
Yeah, no, they did a great job, and they did everything on time, and it's, it's, Ty's been great, Ty's thrilled, too.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
That's great.
So I have, from Alyssa, comments about some of the work that they're doing to help you with. I've mentioned this multiple times to Mike, and I've mentioned it to the council. There's other expenses to having a brand-new building for you and for the council besides just the building, and one of which is for me, marketing and/or advertising around this. And like you and I have spoken, if you're in business here, you know that the average visiting customer gets really concerned if you try to tell them two blocks from now where to go. And we've done some communications, but we've got a bunch of people that'll be arriving in the next couple of months that aren't here right now. We need a communications plan and a marketing plan to get us through not just where you are now, but where you're going to. And about the time you get that new building, not only is it not your busiest time of year, but it's also, and in theory, we're gonna see cannabis sales start, which, by research from other states, we know that'll dampen liquor sales. And I can see, according to Alyssa's efforts, you know, the city's trying to, to do this, and you've just mentioned some of them with your banners from your suppliers, and she also mentioned some local work you're doing with Sweetwater Design Company for naming and, and whatnot. But what I would like is a marketing plan with a marketing firm. And I'd like to see, every functioning business needs its own website. And I would like to see that you guys get that done as part of what you're able to accomplish. We have to get in front of every hotel, every lodging, so they can all tell their people where you're at. I know it's obvious to us, but I've just answered. I stood next door to your liquor store for how many years and had to try to tell people where the liquor store was?
I've.
It's painful.
Currently working in the liquor store, I have to explain twenty times a day what's going on. I mean, it's insane how things get lost in translation, or people just don't read. The, the, I don't know if the words get switched around, or, I mean, it seems pretty simple. We're a block down, we're leasing the Beaver House, coming back to the spot. You know, that's, seems pretty straightforward, but it really isn't, I guess.
No, but you know, we're all like that. We don't care till it matters to us, this is human nature. So we have to communicate and communicate over and over again. So if you need a res, you know, you need a motion from the council, but money needs to be spent on this. And if Molly is a good source, I mean, obviously, she does web design, or also to help you with picking a marketing firm, I got a one ballpark estimate, about five grand to do some really solid marketing. You mentioned you already know some of your target market, like the Thunder Bay crowd. There may be help in identifying people that are, you're missing right now. We can never take customers for granted. And I, I did ask V C C to give us a list of some potential groups you might visit with, and I didn't get an answer back yet, and so I'll pass it on. But I'd like to see that, and if we need a formal motion for that, I'm, I'm more than happy to, to promote that forward. So I appreciate all the efforts from the rest of the staff, but I think some formal work needs to be done. We are putting a lot of time and money in this, and we expect increased sales and a really good opportunity for you to run a really solid business. So I think that's a key part that most business owners, I don't know. Craig, thoughts, comments?
Oh, there's Craig. But we can't hear Craig.
Uh, hey, Chris.
There we go.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, good to listen to you, Chris. Got a lot to do, I understand that. You need any help, people write to let us all know what you need, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Take your stuff moved. Anyway, yeah, and I know you're writing most signs and stuff like that, but, you know, people are gonna go to the liquor store. You know, they know where it was.
Right.
But we own that public parking lot across the street, and, you know, we could put signage facing up the one-way, we could put signage facing up Broadway, so we're catching the people making a right-hand turn, people coming to the one-way, and just keep setting them down Broadway. I mean, that's a simple sign, but like Tracy said, if you want to reach out somehow, get information to everyone, I think that website is kind of a neat idea for us to have a website that we're looking for. It's kind of nice to know the hours that are being posted. Maybe some sales deals you're running, I don't know, you know, just.
General information.
Just general information, you know, the fact that we're moving to a temporary location, we're building a new one, you know, kind of builds a little excitement, too, you know?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Do a fun video.
Aren't we putting like a information thing, right, like kind of where this construction is, saying we've moved to? I think that's part of the deal.
Uh, I don't know, because they have to fence and do whatever.
Like on the fences, I thought that was one thing.
It might be.
Just to kind of direct people.
What area they're, I think they don't fence off the whole lot, and maybe we could use a little bit of that lot going south or, uh, or something, either that, or we gotta think of maybe, like you said, temporary sign or kiosk or something that just explains to people what's going on. You know?
And there's lots of ways to get to them. You know, they're gonna go over to visit Coccone and ask, they're gonna ask about, you know, everything.
Yeah.
Over there. And you can get on their list and get advertising and and awareness.
We advertise, we advertise with them.
They've got other parts they said you're not part of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that you should probably get yourself into. And marketing is more than advertising. It's identifying who you're missing. There's just more to it. It it it's, it's, I think, money well spent to get help.
Yeah, I mean, the the marketing thing is kind of a unique, what do we want to do with our marketing? Well, we want to tell people we're here. We want to show them where we are. We want to show them that we have a new location. We want, you know?
Yep, and and get to people who maybe you aren't getting to right now. There there's a lot. So I guess what I'm trying to say one more time is it's worth spending the money to get in front of the professionals. I appreciate the staff's help with this, but they can learn along with you.
Yeah.
And, um, everyone will get a little bit better from that.
I, like, as far as web presence and stuff like that, I, we have, I feel like we need somebody to do that. That's not, that's, I don't have time to do that.
You're not, that's what we're saying.
It's not a my, yeah.
We hire someone to create you a website.
Something that Pat could.
No, that's why we're gonna go to a professional that does web design, and then it gets created so that within you and your staff, you can make it function. If you wanna put up a sale, you can put up a sale.
Okay.
They're all pretty basic and pretty easy. There's nothing tricky about them anymore. Um, and it doesn't have to be Molly Larson, but I see you're already working with her, you know, whatever, get some estimates. Um, there's a lot more that can be done.
I mean, if I feel like if we're trying to reach specific groups or people from far away, we need a little different marketing strategy than.
Yep.
You know?
You know, if if I go somewhere near, what's the first thing I do on vacation? I start doing a search.
Yeah.
Keyword, where is this located? And I expect to see a website, and then I expect to find after that the rest of the questions. But there may be people you're missing, maybe people that aren't part of your shopping experience right now, and and we want them, especially when a new store comes. And as Craig said, a little bit of excitement about that. And, you know, people can shop wherever they want to, but they get, you know, if they feel like they somehow connect with you, they're going, you know, you can buy coffee anywhere, but.
Oh, yeah, it certainly helps.
Have a connection, just like all of our businesses around here, and I think that's key to success, um, as well.
Yeah.
So, uh, yeah. Anyone else have some questions or thoughts?
Yeah, like, once.
Good.
If 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 you wanna see what's going on, if you wanna take a little tour, uh, let me know. We we can go over there anytime and look at things and it kind of, it's it's, it's a lot easier to see when you're there than to explain.
Oh, yeah.
You know, for sure.
Well, we really appreciate all the hard work, 'cause, I mean, you're the one, I mean, your group is really moving stuff. Like, the rest of the building, people kind of walked away from, but you have to literally move your stuff. That's a lot of work.
It is, yeah. It'll be nice when it's done for the last time.
Mm-hmm. Right, moving in, you better.
Moving in, yes, not temporary, but moving in will be wonderful.
Yeah.
Your reward.
Yeah, I mean, you know, a diff- a different view is nice for a year, too.
Right.
Yeah. There you go. Close to the donuts.
We'll see how being close to the donut shop works for everybody, too. That's right.
Ooh, yes.
That's right.
Well, yeah, what about the chamber, um, meetings? You could do one of those monthly chamber connect things. You could host one of those. Yeah, people would like that. Ooh, there's a really good idea. Fun with donuts. Um.
Anybody know how old that Beaver House building is? You got any ideas, Craig?
I don't know, I know, I know years ago, my mom used to work in a building, I think it was on the other side of the street. And I, I'm not sure. Did the building sit in the parking lot of the of the bank? Was that, uh, like a co-op or something? Kind of thing, I saw pictures of that long time ago.
Oh, yeah, it was at Taff D's and before, yeah. Mm-hmm.
It was that, yeah, so I don't know.
Now I know which direction you meant.
I don't know what the Beaver House was originally. Some kind of retail space, I have that.
We want the tail back.
You sure we could find it?
Yeah, that would be fun.
Yeah, it's a little building.
Sorry, Mike, Chris.
Yeah.
I was, I know Lenny, do you have stuff you wanted to contribute to all of this and all your work, too?
Most of it already.
Got it?
Yeah, I mean, we've been, Lenny and I have talked to each other quite a bit about the different things that we gotta do. You know, just from getting new locks on the doors, to moving things, building a ramp, to doing the bathroom stuff, to. I feel like we're, our communication has been really good and we're on track to get everything done as it should be.
Good.
Right.
Good. Yeah, 'cause we know this is super key. Um, so already, the the city staff is already kind of set up and they can go to work already, but you still got a lot of, you guys still have a lot of work to do, and, um, you still have a key date you have to meet, so. I don't know. Well, would you like to come back on a regular basis through the rest of this year to kind of keep us updated, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think like, once we get things rolling, maybe we don't need to come every month, but every, you know, so often, for sure.
Okay, we could just tell Patrick to kind of put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Whatever frequency you think might might work.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, in between now and then, if you have any questions for me, just come and see me or email me and we'll, I'll happily answer them.
Okay.
Great. Thanks, Chris.
I'd like to see what you've been working on over there.
You want to check it out?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty cool.
Well, um, but should he like stop in the store and find a time to go, I mean, is that the best way?
Just let me know what works good for you and.
I'm off till Monday, so.
You are, if you want to stop in tomorrow.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, why don't you come, like, we get trucks in the morning, so why don't you come after like ten?
Perfect.
And then we can go over there and take a look.
Cool.
Yeah.
We can all come and have a group tour, or we've just set up ourselves for a meeting, so.
Group tour, we can do individual tours. Individual tours, so.
Post it.
Find you over here or over there?
Over here, yeah. Yeah, so I will see you all soon.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Thanks a lot, Chris. Appreciate it.
I just have one question.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Did you, do you have, did you need space as well, it's like storage, like containers or?
So we, we have a cargo container set on the backside of Nita's property, kind of paralleling the Beaver House, so that would be like the southeast corner. So that will be our storage for now. Yep, that is all in place already.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
Good luck.
Take care.
Thanks, Chris. All right, right in line, one of our other equally important businesses, our park.
Good evening.
So.
Yeah.
Thanks, Lenny. Um, so Dave Tiersteg is here from our park, as park director. Did you say park and marina? Did you say parks? Okay.
Parks manager.
Okay. Oh.
Unless it's on LinkedIn, I think I'm the Parks and Recreation Department Director.
Kind of like from TV shows?
Yeah.
So first off, you've got multiple items this evening, but first off is resolution twenty twenty-four twenty-two having to do with our regional parks designation.
Yeah, I think this is just strictly a formality. Part of the application process with the Minnesota Greater Regional Parks and Trails Commission is a resolution from the City Council that they support, approve, proceed with the master plan submission. So I believe you've all got that resolution and we're talking.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a simple motion.
All right. I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two.
Second? Okay. Um, I do have a couple of questions. So, and that, in that first, uh, paragraph, as a designation, just couple, you know, really high level, you know, what are some of the benefits and responsibilities if we obtain this?
The biggest benefit is the eligibility for legacy funding.
Okay.
By far. It's a special group of parks that are outside of the metro, five-state county. Metro gets about a third of the legacy money for recreation, the DNR gets about a third of the money. Then the other third goes to the outstate, regionally significant parks.
Okay.
So it's, it's a real exclusive club for state funding.
All right.
Responsibility wise, it has no burdens, it's, you know, something we would want anyway. There's no strings attached.
Okay.
Right.
Um.
Does this include the marina then as well?
Yeah, so this was, this is entirely a product of our, probably about a seven-year process now with an initial application to this commission in about twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Uh, similar to the Sawtooth Bluffs project, where we did an initial application, the commission scored it as a high-ranking park. And yet, the second phase is a master plan that details our intentions for development, you know, capital improvement plan. And so, um, so, and again, the Sawtooth Bluffs went through this process, and I believe twenty eighteen is a county-city joint venture. That master plan really never attained approval and these sorts of resolutions on behalf of the city and the county, so it's kind of sitting idle, the Sawtooth Bluffs. But the rec park went in on the full, you know, master plan that we did in twenty twenty-three is the result now of like being eligible or being able to apply, and this resolution is one of those components to that plan.
Okay. So it, it would potentially influence Sawtooth Bluffs' future planning, or no, it's just our part within our park and our master plan?
It is, yeah. It's entirely within the city. The recreation area was what was covered in the master plan. The campground, the marina, the nature area. We're, I mean, technically, we didn't even include Boulder Park, Harbor Park, the golf course, some of our other holdings aren't included in this master plan. And it was purposeful because of the specificity of the funding through the state. They wanted us to focus on the campground and the marina as the two key regionally significant components. City parks, yes, golf courses, they don't care to fund. And so we took their direction to just focus on the recreation area.
Great.
That's important to know.
Good to know.
And I think, as we talked about last year, the marina in particular was a factor for our regional significance. We see camping at the state parks, several other municipal campgrounds on the shore, but the municipal marina on the shore was a real key distinction for why we're so significant.
Um, so then, this tying back to your first comment, so this might lead to finding, um, more dollars to help with actually implementing?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, this is, excuse me, this has been the real goal all along. As a result of our master plan, we portrayed, you know, ten million dollars in improvements, not including the marina. Once we threw the the marina in, which is just a very high-level estimate for another ten million, you know, our capital improvement plan within the master plan, and it's over twenty years, is about twenty million dollars. And tapping into that state funding to build out major components of that is the real key to this. New bathhouses, new trailhead parking, new pedestrian accessibility, new trails, new marina.
Cool. Okay.
Long road, though. Like I say, it's a application now we're completing. It'll be judged by the commission. I think on a quarterly basis, they meet, so we'll know the results of are we significant within the next three months. And then that just starts the whole new process of going to work on real plans, real fundable plans that we would resubmit them for, you know, funding, and it would be easily a year out. But the park was prioritized, and I think like we talked about in November, December, when I visited, like, some of those top priorities was accessibility and signage and the bathhouse improvements.
Yeah.
Cool. Okay. With that, um, all in favor of resolution twenty twenty-four twenty-two?
Roll call.
Oh, thank you. Is this the first one since, okay, so we didn't goof up the other one. All right, with Craig now in attendance, we'll be on roll call. Thank you, Ben. Uh, Craig?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Myself, I.
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for all of your hard work. That's a big process. You spend a lot of time just, you know, connecting with that company and putting the whole master park plan together. It was a, a lot. And you guys did it really pretty fast, really.
Nine months.
Yeah.
Well, and if you count, we're still putting in the application, you could call it a year.
Sure. Okay, one out of three. So downtown public restrooms, um, another item that needs to be addressed considering we are about to have a new city hall and liquor store. We also are gonna be without our public restrooms. And, uh, for any of you that haven't been in part of this conversation for the many years I've been in city council, that's been an ongoing conversation, not to mention the fact that this year we're exasperating now with the fact that we're taking away our public restrooms for the summer. But our downtown business community has long asked for us to provide more and better bathrooms during the summer. And we've talked about this over time, and we've, uh, looked at, um, more permanent possibilities before. I think Davey, you've been in some of those conversations over the time. And, uh, this led to an option this year of finally realizing something I brought up a while ago, which was using these temporary trailers, um, that are, because they're trailers movable and great for our seasonal need. And I know Mike asked you to take on the responsibility of looking and investigating this, which you've done, and brought a nice summary for us this evening. And, um, you worked really a lot with, um, with G and G Septic, with Pete Greshick to, um, get that, um, going. So, um, appreciate that. And I'm just, I printed out for everyone, and, um, because Craig isn't here, he didn't, so I'm just gonna put that up on the screen. But I took your numbers just because I needed a better side-by-side visual, and I'm not, some people might not think this is easier. I don't know. But, um, for Craig's benefit, I'm gonna put it up on the screen. So we had options that basically involve purchase versus lease. And then, um, ADA compliant, which sim- is not simply, but means that we have a working bathroom with water and space for anyone, wheelbar- wheelchair or not, um, anyone who might need assistance in a restroom. Um, and we can more replicate a real restroom for people. And of course, we read our comments earlier at the beginning. Uh, so for me, part of what we're trying to achieve with this is, is replicating a real restroom for people, providing that extra assistance, whether it may be somebody older, it might be a parent with young children, um, trying to all get in a restroom at one time. And sometimes you'd like some sanitation beyond just the nice gel that comes out of a. Um, and then also, I think a need to reduce the burden that would otherwise fall in our downtown business community, which it does already. and then also I think a need to reduce the burden that would otherwise fall in our downtown business community, which it does already. And that's been a hot topic over the years, but we would be exasperating and putting a larger burden on them this particular summer. So I think this could help us this year and out into future years. And I know your lease options with G and G Septicus for three years. And then there's certain costs in here that are, that run no matter what, which option we pick versus outside of the just using porta potties option, which is option one. Some of those costs repeat. And then some are specific. So other thoughts you wanted to add to this, Dave? You wrote up a really nice memo for all of us.
Well, thank you. I, you know, I can't help but note that in the background information, I neglected to not brag, but announce that the new city hall will triple our capacity in its configuration for both male and female and a family friendly ADA stall. And so not to be lost in this discussion and as we've heard from some of our, you know, advocates that we, I feel we're very responsive in the design of the new city hall.
Yep, we have been.
And that it's really gonna be a nice facility. It's got a family room, ADA sized. It's got three stalls for the ladies. You know, one of them ADA, or it doesn't look ADA, but it's a bigger stall, big stall for the men, two urinals. And so a good thing to keep in mind is that starting next season, the new city hall really have some nice facilities.
Which we know, but we were under before. So even though your first sentence said, you know, this is what we had, we knew that was inadequate.
Yeah.
And even this, I think, is just getting us up to whatever. And ultimately, I still think we, because of the size of the amount of people that come into our community, I think we've identified in the past that the need is is greater. And it's not even just capacity in one restroom. It's the fact that if you're in one part of town and you're somewhere else from the restrooms, that can be a long distance with a young child or an elderly person. It would be nice to have, which we do through porta potties, have more spaces and locations people can get to quickly and efficiently, which also it just seems hard for me to fathom if I hadn't answered questions like we talked about with Chris, like where's the liquor store for many years? Or how to get down to the lighthouse without being scared they were gonna get lost? It's hard for me to explain, but I'm totally convinced that if you try to tell somebody then they're two blocks away where the bathrooms are, they'll freak out. And I'm not trying to make light of this with anybody, but it's just hard. It's obvious when you live here. It's not when you don't. So the more spots we have that kind of access for people, I think the better off we are. Anyways, anything else then, Dave?
The staff component is important. I just want people to realize that our cleaning staff is limited. It seems to be getting harder and harder to find custodial workers every summer, seasonal workers for our park operation. We have four bathhouses in the park that are big and have many, many stalls and many, many showers and and I'm always nervous going into the season if we'll have enough cleaners to clean our operations, to clean our enterprise operations. The public restrooms are under our wing of custodial care, just like we share with Lenny and his staff. And we've been able to keep city hall public restrooms clean, you know, because they're small. They they're quick to clean. But the G and G porta potty option where they are fully serviced and cleaned and, you know, sort of a hands off approach has has really been a big deal for us from a staffing perspective. And I just wanna put that out there that, yes, it's great to have more restrooms and restroom trailers and facilities, but there's a staff component to that. That's very hard to.
So for this summer, the replacement of not using the restrooms here will be handled by whatever we put in place. Ongoing, you can see your point. And then I don't know if it matters if it comes under staff under Lenny or if it comes, you know, is it easier then to find people as opposed to your staff, which is already busy? I mean, is this just something the council needs to ensure there's more priority on? And I know you said it's hard to staff, but it is also because we aren't asking for more staff and we need to be?
No, we're desperately asking every season, every spring, we advertise for custodial help and we get every year less and less applications. Like, just like the labor is tight all over the county. In particular, for a cleaner, for a custodial position that's paying, you know, seventeen, it's just we don't get applicants. And so it's one thing to say, you know, try harder, but it's another thing to get people to apply.
Do we ever look at any of the J one staff force that comes in?
We haven't in the past.
That's tough to get those people in too. I mean, we'd have to find somebody else who's bringing them in.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. I mean, the ones that are already here because they're commonly asking for more work.
I had one application last year that I followed up on and it didn't work out. So it is a possibility. It is, it is in the mix.
Because they'll come around and ask for more work.
At a staff level, at a department head level, we talked about adding a full time, year round custodial benefited, you know, decent year round, full time position. That would, I think, be a solution that's continued to be talked about. You know, budget season is usually when that comes up because it's a seventy, eighty thousand dollar option. But it would be able to attract and retain a, you know, quality year round position, obviously is more, more desired than a seasonal, non benefitted position. So just with that in mind, we've been really lucky to have Pete and G and G and their hands on, and, you know, they do a wonderful job, just like Sarah said. And I've heard this from a lot of users of the porta potties that they're the best and cleanest porta potties they have been in. So I don't want to sell that short. We're not sure what a portable restroom trailer would take for cleaning. We don't, this I would just say this in my old spiel of, we don't know how a portable restroom trailer will actually work. It's a new idea. It's.
Well, they're commonly used. Do you want to do some outreach to ask some of the people?
I've done all the Google.
Well, no, I mean, ask people, like, what, how has this affected your business? What has that meant? To do just what you're saying.
Yeah, so I did all the Google research and reviews and how are they easy to clean? Do they stink? Are they hot? Are they cold? And it all comes back pretty positive from private companies doing private parties and concerts and, you know, corporate events. And so when you've got that model of like a private use, it seems fine. And the vendors are able to service them and keep them pumped and keep them cleaned. And I haven't seen any red flags. But I haven't, I haven't found any municipalities that are using these as like public restaurants for the general public that are open twenty four seven down by the point where the kids hang out. And so, you know, I have a little fear of vandalism and, you know, you know, walking in on a mess a half hour after we've cleaned it.
Right.
But that's the nature of public restrooms. And like I said, we got four of them in the park. And so we're very equipped and very experienced with this.
Yeah, well, I mean, and that could be a risk with the porta potties too. You know, people decide and do what they're not supposed to do. I'm assuming at a certain point in time, we can lock them in the evening. We're not intending to leave them twenty four seven.
They're lockable, but I didn't factor that into how that would look or who would do that at ten eight, you know, ten P M. Maybe it's on the sheriff or someone could do that for us. That was kind of the model at the city hall restroom. I think it was for a period of time being locked because of vandalism.
Yeah, I don't know that they have to be open twenty four seven. I mean, I think there's, I think that makes sense. A certain point, we've done our share for the day. You know, and but you're right, how do you handle that? I don't know. I don't know if they have, I suppose, if they have an auto lock capability. Chris, that would be risky if you're in there.
Yeah, that, that feature I have not seen on the spec sheets.
Yeah, but that's.
Talking about specs, talking with sales folks, there's demand for these. The Satellite Company was identified as a real quality brand. So the two examples that you have in your packet are from that company. When I first reached out to them two or three weeks ago to get this started, the lead time was eight to nine weeks. And I thought, great, we'll have it by May. I just talked to the sales rep this morning. They went to a big consumer show in Texas last week. They've taken tons of orders. The lead time is now thirteen weeks from Satellite, mid June. He did mention a few other trusted brands that we can research. So I think for the purpose of tonight's discussion, it's kind of a, where do you want me to go? How much do you want to spend? We're gonna have to come back with two or three different proposals and prices and we pick the winner as soon as we can, if that's the direction to go.
Yeah. Well, and I've seen enough of them between private and events and public things. I know, like, some interiors try to look super pretty, like, oh, here's a little flower vase in there.
They all have fake flowers on the brochure.
Yeah, and I'm like, okay, that's not really what we're going for. We want, you know, the easiest to clean.
That's why we've gone with Satellite or this other company Jag, because they're like commercially constructed with seamless floors and fiberglass ceilings and like they're designed for the hostile conditions that we're gonna put them into.
Yeah, which I thought, well.
But I did see that in the half a dozen brands that are out there. There's some luxury units that the people in Hollywood use that have, you know, full length mirrors and vanity lights and the fluffy toilets. No, it is a, it is a new industry, or I would say a newer industry, an emerging industry. There's some, I think, price points in it, just like RV trailers. That's all these really are, you know, glorified RV trailer, specialty RV trailers with, you know, holding tanks and, you know, water heaters, water pumps. Very similar to what we're used to seeing in the park for RV trailers. But the big difference is ADA versus non ADA. You can see that in the cost. All the brands or all the, all the salespeople I've been dealing with have talked about ADA being a real niche that only goes for government contracts or for, you know, mandatory requirements and that they're harder to sell on the resale side of things, harder to set up to get them level. We don't feel like we'll have that problem in Boulder Park. And most of them, there's, I just, this afternoon, found a potential six stall ADA from a different brand that's in stock, but it's a hundred and seven thousand, just for an idea of like.
Oh, this other one was ninety five? Yeah, so now you're looking a hundred and seven. Okay, I'll just write that on the top.
Just to let you know, if we go ADA trailer, there's, I'll have to keep the research on. I really liked what I saw from this. This was that Jag brand, which was okay, which was, you know, on the list of good quality. It was a six stall, five hundred gallon holding tank. And it was listed at one oh seven.
So that's, so now we're up from three stalls to six plus ADA.
Yeah.
So what you're getting for your money is a lot more.
Yeah. And I, and we, the five hundred gallon holding tank versus the three hundred is a big piece of it too, because of frequency of needing to empty it.
Oh, okay. So that could, yeah, change the cost estimates too, right? Yeah.
Okay, so that's a six stall, you said, ADA.
Approximately one oh nine or one oh eight. I didn't get the actual quote from the salesman. I was just online shopping. After I found out satellites were, you know, thirteen weeks out and it'd be best case scenario, like mid June.
So maybe you actually ended up better off. I mean, in that, I mean, what you get for the money.
In stock, yeah.
Yeah. Alright. Craig, did you have some particular questions or thoughts?
No, this is kind of the first time I've talked about, well, talked about trailers before.
Yeah.
Take care of our summer issues. But this is the first time we actually put numbers to these units and what they actually cost. So I don't know. I'm just thinking we're, we're, we're looking for a short term fix to go get our new building built. Or are we looking for a long term fix to take care of extra flow of traffic even though we built it and built on?
I, oh.
I don't know which way we're going here, but this is like a budgeted item. We didn't, I mean, we haven't talked about spending twenty fifty thousand dollars on some of this.
Well, what we have talked about, once again, within building this building is the additional costs that we are occurring. And such as scanning all the documents that didn't get scanned for years and years and years. And we also talked about the need to replace restrooms. We can decide as a group if we think it's short term or long term, but as I started out, we've known this problem for a long time and we're helping it by getting a better one in our new building. But I still think there's potential need that we're under serving. And I still, I feel that as long as our economy requires success is still tourism based, this is one important piece we can add to that. If we ever get a diversified economy, I might think otherwise. But right now, and we put a lot of pressure on all of our small businesses for that. And I certainly appreciate the fact that people get into public restrooms and are completely disrespectful. So I realize that's a lot for your group to add. I've seen it in other businesses. But I also don't want to increase that for our business community either. So I see it as longer than just this summer because I think it has application. We could pull it, pull it out seasonally. We could also lease it out for special events. We do host, we don't host, but our community hosts a lot of events. Potentially, they would like to lease a better facility for their event. So I, I don't know. I see that. Oh, and I also see if we're going to spend the money on a lease that has a three year minimum to it, then I'd rather just buy one. The cost difference wasn't that great, looking at your numbers. And then we have something at the end. Maybe they aren't the biggest seller, but it doesn't mean someone isn't gonna buy it if that's the route we decide to go. We'll get something out of it or we'll continue to utilize it or lease it. That's, that's my take on it.
Yeah, Craig, and I could say this could supplement the porta potties that would have otherwise been used next summer, the summer thereafter. Like the idea that, you know, Boulder Park is already, we put out four to six porta potties. And this would, this would replace that, you know, going forward. We wouldn't have that expense. We wouldn't have to do that. We could put this trailer out in Boulder Park next summer.
What does that cost us to do ballpark?
They're about three hundred a month per, so it's.
Three hundred?
Yeah, so it's about eighteen.
Ten grand.
I mean, you can see what our annual spend is, is about twenty grand, but that's for. Yeah. I think we cut that about in half. If we still do them down by the Coast Guard building, but we don't do them at city hall anymore, and we don't do them in Boulder Park anymore, I bet we cut that twenty and two thirds. So we're down to spending maybe only seven, eight thousand on porta potties. But we still have the trailer.
But I added eight thousand to cleaning.
Yeah, and pumping. I mean, there's still some fixed expense to the trailer. You're right. It's probably, it's probably a wash. But it's a much better experience.
Yeah, potentially.
I always, I've done a little focus group on this. All the groups I've talked to, I've said, what would you prefer? Nobody's picked the porta potty. But they're not paying for it. I get that. But I did, I'll, I'll tell you this. I was, I'm on the, the Grand Ray Tourism Association Board. We met on Monday, or just yesterday, sorry, Tuesday we met. I went around the room, presented these options. Nobody felt strongly about it, which was something to consider. But the consensus formed around an ADA trailer after I sort of loosened them up and said, what would you prefer? You know, what would you use if it was your family? Of course, we all want the trailer. Same, I think the same message from the downtown business coalition where I reached out to Linda from the chamber, sent the packet, sent the email request for feedback. We got Sarah. We got, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name of the other one.
Gina Joyce, yeah.
And we got Gina from the, the Wheeler, yeah. So a little surprised that there wasn't twelve comments from the business community or from the tourism community.
And I, and I don't, I haven't been to the downtown business meetings for a while, but unfortunately, they don't get a wide enough. but unfortunately, they don't get a wide enough range of attendance. Now, maybe that's picked up.
Well, and this wasn't just in a meeting. Like, Linda sent out a really good email to all the stakeholders.
Yeah, I, that's one, I don't know if they.
Saw it, yeah. I was, after that email was out, I kind of expected like a dozen people to say, here's what you should do, because it's been a touch, you know, what do we call it, a hot point issue in the past.
Oh, yeah, I've, and I, that's one of the ongoing questions that I get around this whole City Hall deal is what are we gonna do with bathrooms? And you better come up with something around this. Not only like you're saying, you know, our new design that we've already done, which I think we've done a really nice job with, but also like this summer too, a lot of strong feedback. And we've had a lot of, not a lot, but we've had side groups that were ready to take this on themselves in the past, to pursue additional bathrooms, not because of our change to City Hall right now, but in general.
I'll say just one last thing and then I'll let you, I'll discuss. And then if you want to ask questions, obviously, but I feel like I've said a lot. I do, Pete's been really good on this. G and G Septic is our local provider for the porta-potty option as well as the service and the pump and all this. And so he's been really easy to work with. He realizes the financial commitments of this three-year lease on an eight-hole. I don't know if that was in my memo, but the trailer Pete would provide for this price was an eight-stall, non-ADA. And he could or would put an ADA biffy next to it.
Yeah, I put it in there. Because you answered that for me.
Yeah, but he's also got a four-stall option with an ADA closet next to it, and it's more like a hundred thousand over three years.
So far, and we're still adding that extra cost of adding ADA on top of it, right?
No, that was included.
So it was included, it was about fifty thousand less.
But, but the ADA closet went away in next year and the third year because of the City Hall availability. So he had a pretty complex, like, the first year would be sixty-five hundred per month, including the ADA closet, and including three times a week cleaning, because I expressed our, like, cleaning crunch. So Pete was willing to clean it while they pump it, but it wouldn't be daily. Be three times a week, it'd be about sixty-five hundred a month for six months. And then the second year, it's six grand a month, no ADA closet. Third year, it's four grand, no ADA closet, and continuing forward with about four grand a month.
The ADA closet could be added.
It could. Optics are why I would rule that out from, uh, uh, all-access, equal access, equal facilities, like, you want, you, the portable restroom trailer with an ADA closet next to it works at private events, but the, but there's an optics to this that looks like who's got the better deal here, folks.
Yeah, if you, if you really needed that ADA part, you feel like once again you've been minimized. That's very true. I didn't think about that before, but yeah, that's very, that would be real obvious to the right person.
It'd look bad on social media.
Well, and it is making a statement, even at a broader thing, um, completely. I think it misses, for me anyways, it misses the people I really want to do a better job. I mean, that can be a parent and a young child.
That said, it almost takes option two A off the table? If, if that's, if, if you're all in agreement there.
Well, and I don't know. I mean, that's just me, um, how people feel about, but that's how I see that. You know, when you're downtown and you're watching all these families having a great time, you're usually in a group, and then as a group, they'll head over here to the toilets and be out waiting for each other, I mean, or, you know, I mean, I've been a parent with a kid, and, or even myself sometimes, something happens, the little jelly unit's not gonna cut it in a porta-potty. So I, I, when I look at the burden of what our small businesses do around our downtown, I just think we need to step up to the plate. Even though I, I appreciate the issues you brought up, like staffing or whatever, but they, they have those issues too. And they're, they're slugging it out and we'll do whatever we can. I don't know what it is, but, so anyway, it's more conversation, discussion. I've yapped enough.
So we still have that six-stall one that you mentioned. That was ADA compliant, that's a hundred and nine. And what are the, what is, I didn't quite capture, what are the maintenance costs for any of them?
What's the timeline on that bigger one?
It's listed as, as in-stock, but I haven't confirmed that with, with sales. I just, just found it today. Okay, so these will be constant anyway?
Yeah.
No matter what we do.
Together.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yeah, my staff time was, just kind of rough math there, uh, two hours a day, one in the morning, one in the afternoon, plus cleaning supplies and toilet paper and paper products.
The other thing I thought about owning too is that, you know, it's a six-month minimum or whatever, but, you know, we, depending on weather or whatever, we can decide how long when we own operates. I mean, I realize typically we're kind of busy through MEA, right? That's sort of our last hurrah.
May through October is what we've been, you know, putting porta-potties out, yeah.
Yeah.
It definitely drops off mid-week in October. May is a slow start, but yeah, it's, May through October is why I use six months.
So we can decide to.
At that point, you know, November through April, C- City Hall would be adequate, has been adequate. We just know this by having, you know, you know, when you clean it in April, it's maybe once a day instead of twice a day.
And, you know, and I think of this cost versus the cost we looked at to, like, build a structure when, I guess you'd call that Boulder Park.
Yeah.
You know, across from.
Yeah, I know, Tracy, it's, it's.
And that was a lot of money.
Couple hundred. I've, I've looked down that road too already. I put out feelers for these pre-cast restrooms. You see them at the Wayside Rest or at the State Parks, you know, they're somewhat modular and pre-cast. And I've got pricing in like materials seventy-five thousand to a hundred thousand, but then installation, they kind of do a one, a times-one multiplier, so it'd be another hundred thousand for installation. So I feel like the minimum we could get in on a brick-and-mortar restroom in Boulder Park would be a couple hundred thousand.
I thought it was even more the last time we looked at it.
Again, these are just estimators. Maybe it's more expensive because it's Cook County, so it's three hundred thousand, but.
Well, and we looked at, um, similar to like what they have with Onion River. Uh, I remember we looked at that one as an example once.
Those are vaults though.
Yeah, but I just, we just looked at, and they were like really, we went, contacted the state. Those were incredibly expensive.
Yeah.
Part of it was just durability, but anyways.
Yeah.
One thing I see on, on this trailer one that's available is it indicates that there's a hydraulic lift to use the handicap. It's not ground-level rolling.
Yeah, I haven't looked that close at that bill.
Well, it calls it a lift-room rest trailer. And then on the flip side, it's a battery-powered hydraulic lift room. So is that something that you want people to operate themselves?
Again, I'd have to look at, I, you know, we gotta talk to the salesman, get some real pictures of it and how it works and if it works.
I mean, I, I hear everything you're saying. I think there'd be value in having power out there because it could be universal for many things.
Well, power's a requirement just for the lights and heat and, yeah.
Yes.
Water heater.
Since it was, you know, it needed no matter what, I just took it down there to pull the math out easy, but, yeah.
Thing that's resonating with me, I guess, is the staffing concern because we're fighting the same battle at the hospital with housekeeping. We can't fill open positions. It doesn't matter what salary you, you, you offer as much as you can, full benefits, and it's still unanswered. So that doesn't make you look good either if you have a great facility, but it's in poor operation, operating condition.
Any else, Ben?
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay. All right. Any thoughts, Ben?
No, uh-uh.
Okay. Do you guys have an idea of which direction you'd like to head with this so we can help Dave move forward?
Can I? I know we talked about building one before. And that.
It's not a reality for this season though, Michael, so.
No, I know, I know. I'm just, I'm just saying like, you know, because we could, we could just do porta-potties like we've done. And then have a plan to actually build what we want.
Yeah.
And, you know, ju- just my thought.
Yeah, I mean, it's a trailer and we would own it, but it's a trailer. I mean, how long will it last? You know, I, I mean, I, I don't really know, but, you know, I just think about a trailer. I'm like, well, you know, I mean, they're durable, but.
No, I know. It's just that was a lot more cost-effective. I'll just, like, I'm always amazed by building cost rate, but what were we looking at? A dog pound over three hundred thousand dollars, I think was the estimate they gave to get that done? With, and a lot of that had to do with requirements for the plumbing and water, whatever, that, that has to be in there. I'm not saying the building, whatever, but I'm still skeptical that we'll ever put a, a, unless, right, unless we, um, at some point, depending on where we end up with the Coast Guard, there's still potential there. That's a huge future thing, but that could take away the need down that direction, which I think is a pretty big need, you know, and get rid of porta-potties there. But it would also, all those people who park there then would have a spot to go to, but that's a huge fu- future thing.
Is there any opportunity down the road to use some of that regional significance to help out with public restrooms in park areas or Boulder Park or?
In the campground.
That's it.
You know, we know we need multimillion-dollar restroom rebuilds in the campground. That's why we went for this significance.
Yeah, but we, we didn't include everything.
You consider an offset where we would get state money to do campground restrooms, but that would then redirect our capital to do Boulder Park restrooms, if you want to look at it that way. And we know Boulder Park and Coast Guard lot are really keen for redevelopment and, well, visioning and master planning. Part of what we're working on with the R C P I could, I think, spawn a bigger development plan for Boulder Park.
And I, we did clear with that land trust that we could put about, I mean, that was part of that conversation, right? We were good with that.
We feel like historic use allows it. Porta-potties have been there. It's in, it's in the best interest of the, it's not a protected, like, nature area like the Sweethearts Bluff is. So we would, if we wanted to build a, a, a structure there, we would have to go through land trust review, but we're likely to get approval.
Yeah, I thought we discussed. I just wanted to make sure.
I've alerted them to our R C P I project. And going forward that we have big plans for Boulder Park, and they want to be in the loop because it's in the easement.
Okay, all right. And I think, and I, I get all that, because I know, but I also know that's gonna be a while. It's not gonna be done in the next three years. Or four, or five. I think of how long this City Hall liquor store conversation went on, and it's just reminding me about how long all this stuff will take. To.
And we've been talking about the porta-potties over here for a long time. So I don't know. I mean, I, I could be persuaded to the, to the purchase. You know, I do want to have a more permanent fix, but I could see my way through to seeing that this, this could work for now and give us some breathing room and some time. Although, I don't know. The, yeah, I mean, it's definitely gonna be a better experience, and who knows? I mean, they might be great and they might last forever.
Certainly longer than we think, or they have some, some resale value and we still come out ahead. I think your point about the non-ADA thing with the, and that would not, yeah, that was.
I mean, I'm thinking if we're gonna do it, let's do the, in my opinion, the ADA compliant, I think that would be best.
And your six stalls with, with this last option, which I know you have to get the details on or whatever, but all of a sudden, like, wow, then we get a lot more for the money too.
Yeah.
So all of a sudden, that even looks, um, better to me than before. Because once again, you know, lease is one forty-four.
And, and that was a non-ADA price?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're, it's not like we're not gonna spend the money, um, virtually as opposed to, to buying one. And then we just have to insure the heck out of it in case some kids think they know what to do on a Friday night.
Well, I'm sure they do know.
They do know. Well, all I know is we don't have lumberjacks anymore that lock themselves into laundry mats or use them for their cleaning services, so.
There's a few lumberjacks. I think there's a few lumberjacks left in this county.
Not like the, not the kind that there used to be. That's a tale from my childhood. Which is kind of a sad one when, you know, where you have to spend Christmas.
I think if you're looking in the direction of a trailer, you're wiser to have something to show for your money when the gig is up as opposed to just all rental fees. And it, it would be a good thing to be in the portfolio because you'd have portability, you'd be able to put it several different locations.
Yeah.
So it's not a bad idea. It's a great idea, but if the money is available, that's what I don't know.
Well, yeah, that, that part really isn't the issue because it can be part of our building costs and we've already saved, um, money. And we also know that we have these kinds of costs, which is why I was saying in the beginning, related to moving the building. I mean, this, this building and not just around bathrooms, but additional costs, like for the liquor store and even just things we need to do around City Hall and temporary staffing and moving everyone. We've had costs, but we knew that.
Yeah.
So, um, as Mike said, this might be our one chance to actually have some dollars to do this, is his thought on that. All right, would anyone like to make a motion then, so we can?
I guess I could, uh, make that motion to have Dave investigate further about a purchase of an ADA-compliant, um, porta-potty still, I guess, in a way.
Portable restroom trailer.
Trailer, yeah.
Portable trailer restroom thing. Yes.
That's good. All right, would anyone like to second that?
I'd check it in.
All right, um, any further comments, thoughts?
I would say then that the time is of the essence. I'll take this, if it's successfully passed, motion to work and in two weeks' time have two options or more for purchase before us.
All right, all in favor?
And a roll call.
A roll call. Glad Ben keeps track of everything. And with that, Ben, I'll let you go first.
All right, uh, I'm gonna vote no.
Okay. Bill?
I had some.
Oh.
I had a question that, that was just too late.
Go ahead, Craig. We need to ask him now.
Well, the only question I have is, what, what are you pursuing, Dave? Are you pursuing the one that you just found out about that's a hundred and seven thousand?
Yeah, Craig, I think, I feel if the motion carries, I'll go to work on the, an actual.
That item?
Well, as many quotes, solid quotes that I can get on quality ADA trailers that we can review and at the end of the month, because I feel like this is a capital purchase that we want to have multiple prices on. Tonight's prices were more for examples. But, you know, we're gonna have to act quickly and I'll get the best prices. But, you know, we're gonna have to act quickly and I'll get the best prices on the best options before the council at the end of the month.
Right, and along with those prices, you'd also have when these trailers.
Availability, exactly.
Availability, because, um.
I already know the satellite thing is mid-June.
Well, everything else is like June.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't want to just spend a lot of money for temporary fix. That's my, that's my concern. I think long term, we've always talked about having bathrooms down there, but we've never pulled the trigger on it, didn't. And that's because we've always had talks about a brand new bathroom that gets hooked to a brand new City Hall through a brand new liquor store. So I'm kind of, uh, questioning our thinking right now, that's all, but go ahead. We have a motion to second and we have one board and we can finish roll call.
Is that making difference for you or you're okay? Okay, just want to know, should we start over again? Yep. Bill?
I say aye, but I want you to do good homework on it because I'm concerned about just a patch.
Good. Aye.
Aye.
Craig?
No.
Okay. So with that, it carries and we'll look forward to your selves and.
I don't know, is there any way to streamline this in terms of if I get all my prices in ducks in a row in three days' time? Do you, is there a way to, I don't, I don't want to suggest you have a special meeting over this, but some of this stuff is a 13 week lead time. And in two weeks from now, it's 15 week lead time.
I think in that case, we need to put, um, maximum on the dollar amount and then allow you to go from there. I'm thinking that, well, we already have stipulated it has to be ADA compliant. We've already said it needs to be in a timely man, you know, that it's in stock, that you can actually get it. We would want to maximize the amount of stalls and then I think we would need to amend this to give you a maximum on pricing. If you, because you wanted to be able to possibly take action and not lose a sale, right?
Yes.
So, um, that would be what I think would be the factors you'd need to know, right, to make that decision and be able to go forward.
You know, Tracy, I'm not from, I'm not a hundred percent up on city purchasing procedures, but I just know anytime we're going after a six-figure item, I gotta bring two prices to the council and.
Right.
You know, we talk about them.
Right, and I guess what I was really more thinking about is what are the factors you need to know to be able to make that, you know, what are the criterias that we're asking about or would we be looking at? And I'm trying to make sure I'm listing all of them.
And, and I agree, I, I, it's like, in one sense, I want to be pre-approved to just purchase the best ADA trailer before we meet again because it's two weeks out.
Right, so I'm just trying to think, what are all the factors you would want guidance on to make that decision? So we've said ADA in stock in a timely manner, like Craig said, or it's not gonna suit our needs.
Is mid-June timely?
And, um, we need a, I think you need a ceiling dollar amount so that you know maximum. And then I would say, I'm assuming we'd want the maximum amount of stalls that you could get within that price range rate. And then a durability factor. We don't want cosmetically, we're looking for something that is durable and is the easiest for you to maintain and take care of. Are there other factors we would want him to consider to help make this decision? Because we'll have to amend this, I think, give you that dollar amount.
So I have a question.
Yeah.
Would you be amenable to have a special meeting, say, next Wednesday or sometime next week? We might have document scanning that would need to be approved and we might have abatement contractors that might need to be approved. But I don't have those quotes for abatement yet.
Do that for a second, um.
I could do next Wednesday if that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, I can.
No, can you do that?
Yes.
All right, hang on, I was just gonna look. That's the 20th?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think so. Let me look at one more thing here.
That would really help.
Would that be, that would make it easier, right, for you? Because, yeah, there's no point in you having to sit just because of procedure stuff when time is of the essence. Like Craig said, there's no point to this if we can't.
And I think I've already done enough research that I'm fairly confident I can have two, possibly three options in front of you within a week. Just what we talked about tonight, the satellite three stall for 95 with a 13 week lead time, so that's mid-June. And then these other two, Americana and Jag, the, the Americana was the six-stall for approximately 108. I don't know where delivery fees are on that, but maybe another couple thousand for that, so that might finish more like 110. We'll see about the hydraulic lift and all those details as well, Bill, but.
I like the ones that look like the Ice Castle where you just drop them right down.
And so Ja- Jag, the third like trusted brand, had that similar Ice Castle. I, I've seen it online. It didn't list a price. It was only a three stall. It was very similar to the satellite in the layout and the look. So I would expect the price to be similar as well, but yeah, that, those are the three brands we would consider as soon as we can.
Okay.
And I think the only unknowns right now are lead time and bottom line price.
And then, and I guess I should, you probably already looked into this, like a used market or no? Or then are we looking at something that doesn't really, okay, just double check that one.
I think that is a used one. If, oh, no, that's, that's new. They were listing a non ADA used one through that Americana site.
Okay. All right, so what we're thinking then, that works for everybody to have a meeting next week then on Wednesday? What time?
I'm good, I mean, after, after 4:30, I'm good.
Okay, all right. Same thing, okay.
Anytime.
Uh, Cam, is there a time you were thinking that works with your schedule?
We're good with 4:30 works, that's good.
All right. Oh, that's right, Mike's back too by then, isn't he? I forgot, I think it's still vacation time. So what time?
Can we say, well, yeah, can we say like five?
Five o'clock, yeah, it's still time. All right, so we'll do that and then that would still lend you.
Yep.
All right, um, you had one more item. Thanks a lot, Dave, for all that.
Of course. You're welcome.
You had the kayak dock.
Accessible adaptive paddling, community oriented kayak dock. I guess we would say juxtaposition here is, uh, no coincidence, but thi- this is a project through the D N R. The Parkside Public Access was designed with ADA criteria guidelines because of the state funding. A component of that was the non-motorized dock and, um, the original contract, I think, came in a little high for the D N R. And the funding for the dock was set aside. The city and the D N R signed an amendment, a partnership agreement to, that reserved $60,000 for the purchase of a adaptive paddler's dock. But it put the pressure, the, the responsibility on the city to purchase the dock. The, as I understand it, the money's set aside for us though, will be reimbursed for the purchase. The, uh, park board took a look at this last week, just like I explained in my memo. I've obviously taken quite a look at the two, the two companies that provide these types of docks, Easy Dock and Board Safe. There's an Easy Dock in Two Harbors at the D N R boat launch down by the dock, by the ore dock. And, uh, mixed reviews, staff there struggling with it seasonally, getting it in and out. It's a three-piece unit. It's Rota molded plastic. It's not their favorite dock to deal with. And then the bigger input came from the paddling community and their favor of, uh, Board Safe. You know, definitely tip the scales of which one's a better product. It's got access on both sides and then a gangway with a chute is a big distinction there where you see the picture of the Board Safe product. So you're able to put your boat in the chute, wheel on down the gangway, it's all set up, ready for you near the water. There's this graduated bench that you scoot from your chair into the boat. Handlebars on all four sides, grab, uh, straps as well. And so Board Safe definitely checked out as the, the better product between these two. Park Board agreed. 36-foot gangway put us right over that $60,000 allotment though at a 63,650. Park Board was okay. So talk to the D N R about this, share these prices with the D N R. In order to get the whole 63,650, they would write an amendment to the agreement, potentially funding the entire amount. That's in the works. I don't know the outcome of that. I think it's pretty favorable. But the park board was also comfortable just covering the extra 3650 out of Rec Park Capital Funds. And so I think this is more or less a formality in the sense of purchasing and we've got two products and two prices. And park board prefers the Board Safe product with the 36-foot gangway.
So you, I mean, did you want a motion for us or you're mostly just letting us know what, what your plans are?
Motion wouldn't hurt, but the D N R, I believe, has told me that we, it's not necessary because we've already signed the partnership agreement.
Yeah.
But it, I would think reinforced our position of this is the product we want.
So it's more that your choice that you'd like a motion on? Any more questions for Dave on this?
Uh, just, so the, it is gonna be covered by the D N R? They're gonna basically?
For sure, 60.
The 60?
Yep.
That's what.
The extra 3,650 is, is in the works right now for potential full funding.
Okay. Got it.
So we would like a motion to support the purchase of the Board Safe product. Is that sound, Dave? Okay, would anyone like to, to make that motion?
I will make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further questions or comments? All right, all in favor of the purchase, uh, for Board Safe dock? Roll call, Craig? Michael?
Aye.
Self, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
There we are. You had a very busy night tonight, Dave.
Well, thank you all.
Well done.
Thank you all, well done yourselves. I think this is a win for accessibility.
Yes.
Both these projects, universal access, you know, the, the new facility, the Parkside facility is with the strollable wall. You know, it's already been very favorably reviewed with the all-access community and the, the elders and anybody wheeling and strolling has been really happy with that facility. So this is a nice final piece.
It's nice to watch this slowly get wrapped up and then if we get that community connection done, that'll be really nice.
Tuesday.
What, Tuesday?
They're starting the harbor.
Oh, nice, cool, all right. Wonderful.
Yeah, no, thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Appreciate the work to figure this all out. Um, any council and staff reports?
I just had the commission one, that was it.
Oh, okay. Craig, did you have any reports?
Yeah, we did have a park board meeting, but Dave kinda went through pretty much all of it, so.
Cool, all right. You'll have, oh, we will, we'll do that next meeting. We'll get you aligned in some different committees and things. So you'll have those too, yeah. And, um, Ben?
No, nothing, although, um, I'm gonna put, uh, the North House, uh, on the agenda possibly, um, for next, next meeting. I want to have a broader policy conversation about, um, where we're headed, where, where we need to go relative to, um, the lease be reconsidered and renegotiated. And, uh, I think you've all seen, uh, a letter from the North House, I believe.
A recent letter?
Yeah, it was, uh, maybe, maybe it was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
We'll make sure you re, you'll, you'll get it, yeah.
I don't think I got that.
You'll get it as well. So, and now I'll just maybe, I'll just write up a, you know, maybe a summary, a page or two to, to give you some backdrop as far as why, where we're at and where we're maybe hung up. And, uh, and then I'm gonna need some real feedback from, from the city council to really provide some, um, some clear direction about what we want, what we're willing to do and what is our policy gonna be regarding that property.
Just a quick note, that email's not from North House. It's from like either Patrick or Mike forwarding that letter. So I mean, if you were looking, thinking, oh, I got a thing from North House, that's not what we meant.
Okay, I'll, maybe I just missed it.
Yeah.
That's fine, and we can resend it. Now, maybe I'll just have it resent along with my summary.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, that was, it's in your mind and if you guys can just spend a little time thinking about that and come prepare. Because, you know, I know it's difficult in front of the camera and everything else to have these kinds of policy talks and, and, but I think it's important because it's been going on for a very long time and I, and I think we're at a point where we all want to get some, some new direction, some closure on this and then to restore that relationship, so I just, um, but it's gonna take some, some, we gotta make it a priority, so.
Thank you. Not a lot of meetings. Um, I did have the final meeting with the Empower Small Cities. I had one of the grant I submitted and that was to help us get, collect the, um, contact information for all property owners here in the city of Grand Marais, email, cell phone, whatever, and, um, see if they'll give us a hand with collecting that. Because that's run through the University of Minnesota and maybe they can help us get through that faster than the city's current plan, which is not gonna really get us anywhere. So, um, we'll see how that goes. We also had one final option. They gave us for all of that we submitted, for us to look at their submission form that they hand off to their larger statewide organizations. So we were able to edit and make commentary on that, so that was a nice, that's not a normal offering. And so our grant proposals, which included the East Bay erosion issues, um, are off now to, to see if we can get some help on those. And then on Friday, we'll be off to have that luncheon with our legislators up in Grand Portage. Are you able to make it, Ben? Did you? No, okay. So I guess that's me, myself and I.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. We didn't get a large audience time, so that's all right, no biggie. And yeah, that's all I have as well. Um, yep, so thanks, everyone. I guess that calls it evening. And, um, thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
All right. Yep, good night.